Okay.
Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, December, what today?
Six.
The sixth, two thousand thirteen, the planning commission meeting has called to order. Welcome to our guest, remember? Uh, anybody have any to report this morn- uh, this morning, this afternoon, Bruce?
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Liz? Yeah.
No.
I have two for you too.
Oh, thanks.
Um, any business you think of?
No, I don't have anything.
New business, is there any build case?
Didn't have any this month.
Subdivision plots, uh, final plot Cathedral Springs Lot Six.
Yeah, I've got one. Um, you guys have seen Cathedral Springs several times, that's twenty-one lot subdivision and thousand acres. Um, everybody, we granted it preliminary approval back in May of two thousand twenty-two, so this is Lot Six. There's no infrastructure really for this one, cause um, Crow's Point existing roads, all these lots front. We don't have any issues with the um, infrastructure or anything, so this is the plot they want approved. It's just the final plot for Lot Six. They've chosen to mostly just submit single lots for this, we're getting pretty close to finishing this one out. If there's any questions about it.
All good.
Yeah, there's, there's, this one's again, pretty simple, cause Crow's Point's an existing road, so there's not really a lot for us to look at.
Any discussion on this, good turn? Need a motion?
Yes.
Make it second.
Second.
Okay, motion, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, so move ahead.
Okay.
We need to go back and approve the amendments, I missed that. How come you didn't say something, Liz? You're supposed to keep an eye on me, right?
Yeah.
Uh, your amendments are in your packet, any uh?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion seconds. Got a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Alright, moving on to county agricultural land preservation district.
You gonna show these, Sierra?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm ready.
Charlie Custer's up first.
Alright, cool. Alright, so here's our ag land map, the pink ones are, so. Alright, so this is the first one.
I don't know if you've all met John Groves, he works in our office, he's been helping Sierra with ag land and several other things.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet y'all too. Is it Groves?
Yes.
Um, so this first one here that Sierra has up is uh, Charles Custer, out on Green Gables Road, Inferro Road, y'all were talking about earlier. Uh, grand total, he's got a hundred ninety-one acres there that he's applying for um, easements on. And um, it's um, mostly timber, beef, corn and hay. He's got some streams on there and overall, um, pretty good soils as well. Uh, so that's that first one, I don't know, is there anything else that?
There's like two houses, there's like this one here and this one right here. I think if we would apply for mouth with this, um, moving forward, it would probably be done in chunks. Um, if, if this was on the application list this year, I might have applied for the whole thing, but I think I might maybe do the north section and the south section, or maybe south section in two, depending on what the projected funding is for the projects, but I think overall, um, it's outside like the water and sewer boundaries, which I can bring up. Um, if you have any other questions about like layers and what that looks like, um, I'm happy to, I could just turn them on, so.
More about that's Peter Yon.
Yeah, uh, well now, this is like the West Virginia, so yeah, this is sixty-eight through here. Um, or sixty is just south of this, so. The property, so it doesn't seem like there's any easements in that area.
You guys see any problem with this? Any issues or?
I don't think we had any issues with that.
Yeah, that one was pretty straightforward, and then he has this other one, which was uh, on that Blue Goose.
Blue Goose Road. Yeah, this one is another Charles Custer one up on Blue Goose, he has uh, approximately fifty-eight acres here, no houses. Um, once again, no issues with us on this one. Um, primarily it's, I think, just cropland and timber.
Right. You have to have a hundred acres, is it, join another amount? Property, is he just doing?
You need fifty acres.
Yeah, I need fifty.
Uh, fifty acres is a minimum size, and then at least twenty-five acres of those have to be like the good soils, so.
Okay. And he has thirty-seven acres total qualified.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
He's at that threshold, so.
Our next one is five, right through this.
Let's see all the colors now.
Oh, yeah.
Turned on water and sewer layers.
Uh, eight-six-four North Glade.
Oh, okay.
That's Leonard Custer.
Oh, right.
Which one is that?
Are they related?
They are, they're brothers.
So this is Leonard Custer, he's right off the lake down there, and um, he's got a total of approximately ninety-two acres, sixty-five of which are qualifying soils. And um, I think he's mostly cropland, um, and pasture.
We do have another easement just north of it, so make that area more contiguous, and the brown and yellow layers are water and planned water and sewer service, so the brown actually has, I think, existing service and the yellow is proposed, so. This is nice, this is an area that won't, wouldn't be expanded for that kind of infrastructure, which I think is kind of nice, and also it's um, you know, this is like management area, the green, so.
Properties in the planned water and sewer area are not typically eligible, cause there's already infrastructure there for development.
Expectable.
That's how it was born there, right?
That one's not, but you see as other properties around it are.
Yeah, just one house and, yeah. And the other thing that's nice about this being an ag land is when it's in, under ag land, we monitor it on a periodic basis, and we make sure they have an active soil and water quality plan, which, I don't know, based on I don't know if he has an active soil and water quality plan, but also we can improve projects to make uh, you know, improve the, make some improvements there in that. And that kind of hopefully would pass and pay off in terms of like management and watershed, so that's exciting to me.
Our next one is Darren Carey.
Oh, why, and that takes us by, up to Bremsberg. So like piney ways of wars here, we have like an existing property right there, and then uh, the property next to him is Ethan Carey's, you guys approved that, like glass cycle, and we put in an mouth application for it, so it.
Contiguous for that one, Darren has approximately eighty acres. Hello. Uh, sixty-six of which are qualifying, and uh, once again, he has mostly timber and pasture land there. And he's right off, is that sixty-eight that runs to the south?
Yeah, that's, uh, he's on the national hike, yeah. Any question, if anybody wants to see anything, otherwise I'll move on.
Next one is uh, Sam Houseley. This one is the Sam Houseley property, um, he has uh, two hundred twenty-six acres, a hundred ninety-seven of which are qualifying soils. Uh, I believe there's one residence, may, no, two residences?
No, it's out, it's outside of it.
Oh, okay, nevermind, no residences on this, on the easement. Uh, and mostly he's got pasture land and timber.
So, um, yeah. And we have like an existing easements kind of in this area, but not, nothing contiguous.
Next is Kathy Lyons. This one is Kathy Lyons, uh, she has uh, just over seventy-seven acres, uh, forty-seven point three are qualifying soils. And uh, she is, I guess, I think she's mostly timber, isn't she?
Yeah, it's wooded.
Yeah.
But because I think all the, most of her slopes are north facing, they're actually like uh, they hold more water, so they're more eligible in terms of soils, so. That one's pretty straightforward.
Yep, just timberland there. Next one is
That's what I'm thinking too.
Yeah, it's Greenstein, my last.
Cool.
This one is um, David Greenstein, he has just over ninety-one acres, forty-two of which are qualifying soils. And um, he's mostly also pasture and timberland on that one as well.
And it's adjacent to a head easement already, and a couple other easements in that area, so.
And that's all seven. Do y'all have any questions on those?
You say the about, as ag resources, you can't land lots of these properties, can you?
Well, that becomes a more of a legal issue, so if somebody were, they would have to try to prove whether they have a, a descriptive right of way somewhere, if they don't have that, they may have to try to prove that they have a prescriptive right to u- to use it.
That got to you shaking your head.
Yeah, that would be something that would get attorneys involved, now when we send these to
That's happened to me.
Yeah, when we send them, okay, I'll just, when we send them to mouth, this comes up sometimes, cause they are looking, and, and all these projects would be eventually going to the Maryland Bagland Preservation Foundation in hopes of selling an easement, that's our anticipation, except for the one um, in Barra Creek, no use rural legacy funding, but once they start to look at those, that's one of the questions they're gonna ask, because they're looking at development rights, they're potentially paying for development rights, so they wanna see could this actually be developed, if, if that comes up, if there's not a clear right of way, they may then go back to the landowner and say, you need to find a clear right of way, have one established that would actually allow for subdivision. Um, you might have something more to add about that.
Ours actually didn't get settled out, it was Peter Brown myself.
Mm-hmm.
I had somebody bought a hundred twenty acres below us and wanted a right of way into the Swiglin, next, right on the South River. And uh, they wanted to split the bill three ways, we're looking at, so I had paid half, preservation paid for half, and water for even seven weeks. And I had about ten grand in it, and at the end of the day, Peter Brown actually just bought them out. For like a half million, half a million dollars. Uh, but the state became very involved in you know, what type of right of way existed before, split the right of way.
That and now their title searches go back to like the eighteen hundreds, just to make sure they have mineral rights and everything, so I know that people who like might have gotten easements in like two thousand and five have had trouble like with a, with an easement, maybe on a adjacent piece of property, cause they find severed mineral rights, they'll have to get those back and stuff. Um, in more recent years, that's what they've updated.
He was wanting to even wire the right of way.
Yeah, if it's, you know.
It didn't work out, he knew it was coming, wasn't coming back, so.
If somebody only had like a ten-foot right of way to their property, that wouldn't really be sufficient for much of the subdivision, you need twelve foot just for, you know, sort of five people, so they would probably point that out, and that would be our response, like, well, that doesn't really work with our subdivision standards, so.
They're measuring trees on base sides of the ground, how old they were, and how existing rig was.
Yeah, cause in a sense, that property wouldn't really have much of a development right, so the state's not gonna be interested in pursuing it, but we, we will look at Yeah, and we, we try to review them on the local level, in the office as much as we can, but some of that legal stuff, we defer to the state, cause they're gonna do a whole title research of it, and they'll, they'll take a look at that stuff. And then the owner always has the option of trying to resolve it, sometimes they can, sometimes we have had people just had to drop out, cause they couldn't establish a right of way.
I don't know, two years.
It's like, that's probably average, just for one with no
There's a farm, there's a collective, you're buying your own business, nothing's gonna happen, whatever, and
Good, it is hard, we all see.
Cause there's a couple of properties, the one, the last one looked out, it was like it was sealed in, didn't like there was any road closed to that, and I know that we, well, he personally, pan member, got into a situation where the right of way turned into being really nasty.
Yeah, that one has some blood playing to it, so.
They did, they did a military loss, but they're fifty-eight acre square, fifty acres, where, and it was landlocked and it's tackled. That's why I asked that, because that, that family's not gonna be ever, ever, and yeah, so.
Yeah, I think on, on those, we would probably let people proceed if they meet the, most of the uh, requirements, and then those would be things that we would alert them to, that look, this is potentially an issue if you try to actually sell an easement.
Yeah.
Now, do you need approval on the?
Yes.
You wanna do them individually or just all of them?
It's up to you guys, if there's any questions about an individual one, you could probably talk about that, if everybody's comfortable with all of them, you could vote on all of them.
Any concern going to all as a group? Need a motion to approve the act, Gary Act Cultural Land Preservation Districts?
I'll make it approved.
Second?
Hold on.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, so move ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
We'll be sending those to the county commissioners now.
Anything else, Chad?
No, we'll send those to the county commissioners, I think Sierra already has that scheduled for final approval.
Yeah, they have a hearing on the twenty-first, so, and then we'll go on to do that, so.
Okay, anything else, Bill, glad you could make it.
Sierra, Sierra does have
Sierra can make it too, to be honest with you.
I was gonna reprimand you, not to that.
I'm gonna let Sierra, she's Sierra's working on a water and sewer plan amendment, so I didn't get that on the um, agenda, but I'm gonna let her present that, she's working on that, and it'd be good for you guys to look at that too, so.
Yeah, so I'm displaying it now, I think, I hope. Hey, cool, so I actually presented this, um, right now we're in the public comment period, but I do need concurrence from the planning commission for amendments for water and sewer plans. Uh, this one's pretty straightforward, um, little background on the water and sewer plan, it's a document that supports continued development of water supply and wastewater disposal, and um, it's fall, it's on a ten-year cycle. And it's amended if needed, ours was originally adopted in two thousand fourteen, we are, I'd like to do an update. Though really, I think twenty twenty-five is probably my time period for it, there's no like penalties if you're out of sync. Um, mainly because utilities has a couple consultants doing like, you know, configurations of different water scenarios around the lake, so. Like that work to be done before we do another one, but this is one where like the comprehensive plan and the water and sewer plan, it's really nice whenever they kind of match up, and uh, and this is not a fun plan to update, so I'm hoping maybe formatting and some changes to the future one, it'll make it less of a, if we'll have less updates, and then make it easier to update if we need to, so. Um, there's been, this is the fourth amendment, so first one was to extend Chestnut Ridge area, um, the second one was for trout run sewer improvement, the third one was some map amendments, um, just because, you know, ten years almost passed, and some things have been developed, and then uh, this one is to add map table and text updates to add the Wisp Mountain Water Storage Tank Project, um, that. So, the, to meet the water source, storage, uh, and pressure needs for the businesses and residents for the deep creek lake water system, um, let's see here, sorry about that, alright. Um, the Deep Creek Service Area serves six hundred residents, why do I keep on going back, anyway? And so there is an existing water tank here, but it's not adequately sized uh, for future um, additional development, and so we're gonna have a new water tank. Um, it's gonna be located here, um, by the pond and at the end of Wisp Mountain Road. Here's the previous tank, there is another mechery tank, but it's outside this passage zone, so it doesn't really affect much of this. Um, this tank will ha- be fifty feet above the ground, um, the deal with the existing tank is that because it's about elevation, we can only use like a hundred and fifty thousand gallons uh, to actually give us good pressure, everybody else is like lower than that elevation, so you don't have that uh, head um, for the hydraulics, so. But it needs to be in the water and sewer plan, we have the money to do the project, but we need to have a plan to move forward, so. That's kind of, it's more of a compliance issue, so we're gonna update the map. And here's like the actual text amendment we sent to M D E, oh, and I'm actually gonna add uh, three more words at the, in the last sentence that include uh, and other infrastructure, so if we have other infrastructure improvements, we can just say, look, it's in the text, we're gonna be good, so. Um, and so we had the public hearing, and then hopefully the commissioners will amend it, and then I'll send it to M D E for their approval, and then we're set, so. Any question?
Public hearing, it's here.
I do need them to take some action, so I can add that to the amendment.
Okay, so I think if you took action, it would be to approve this, and then it'd be sent to the county commissioners for final.
We need to approve it.
If you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, or I can give you more information.
Are you gonna be sending this thing plan that you're showing us to anybody else?
It's sent to the public, it went
Just so you know, you got a typo of a
And, yeah.
One mountain.
Oh, thank you, well then I will update that on the website.
It's, it's in big letters too.
Aw, man. Well, uh, okay. Oh, yes, I do, I have
What would you say, it's Mutian?
Ocean water, okay, cool, well, good eyeball.
You gotta get dealt with, take all their time, Mutian.
See if I did. That'll look like a copy and paste of text for other stuff, so, yeah, I will get this uh, once over before we put on, I'll have to repost it, you can find my typo online now, so.
It's okay with me, I think if somebody else catches me.
Any discussion going to amendment that you provide, that you provide?
It's a million gallon?
It's a milling gallon tank, yeah. It's a bigger, it's a big one, yeah.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, so move ahead.
Thank you, awesome. Uh, and then I kinda wanna update you on like all the good work I've been doing, is that okay?
Sure.
Make it worth your while.
I like seeing a map, so I can see where I'm at.
Yeah, sure, I can see maps and projects, so, anyway, Chad, if you wanna share my screen, so I was, or the county was successful in getting some bikeways grants, um, so have do you have an option, there we go, cool. So, the first bikeways grant, can I, do you have access to show which screen I, oh, I bet it's because the PowerPoint's still presenting, let me turn that off. Now you can see this screen, cool. Um, so. Anyway. So, here, so I got a bikeways grant to have um, consultants come in and do a concept plan to connect Loughlin to like Oakland, like one thirty-five is super wide, maybe give it a little road diet, and also we have schools and parks and towns and other attractions, shop, like, you know, the shop and save, um, and you know, all along, and then like community walking tracks in Bradford, all in this area, and you have to, like, I don't know, walking from destination to destination is not very safe for biking either, so we'll have lots of public input, I did apply for A R C funding to make the match of this one, this one's, I think, uh, let's say fifty thousand dollars.
Now, the grant is for the study, is that what?
Yeah, it's for the planning concept, so ideally we'll have a list of projects that would be like things we can then apply for design and then construction grants, whether it's like maybe put a crosswalk or a sidewalk, or, you know, the trail, or a separated pedestrian way, or whatever it is, but then I would go through different pots of money to accomplish them, but this way I'd have a more rather than, this is bad, I'd have, we'll do it, we'll fix these things, and we'll have a list of, that hopefully will make that better, so. I'm excited about that, that, we'll probably get a consultant on board in the spring, and then do kickoff meetings and stuff, and I'll have, you know, meetings with the towns and you guys, and it should be fun.
I asked it, I'm collecting, how long, what, what's the process to get, that you just, you received this grant, how long was that process?
I put a application in, in May, and I sent, like, basically I had to get lots of letters of support, and, you know, I had to kind of calculate what I wanted to do and lay out exactly, basically write my scope that I'm gonna write for my consultant anyway, it took me, I guess, maybe a week or two to write all that up, and then I sent everybody templates, like, here's a letter of support, sign it please. And uh, it's pretty successful in that, and I also went out and took pictures of the existing
So six months normally, that's just definitely.
But yeah, like, yeah, and then, yeah, and it's all S H A, this is all S H A money, use some of my time as match, and I guess our data, like I'll also be sharing, giving G I F data to the consultants, and then I have the A R C funding, which is like only ten grand, which, that took me a week to get that, and I'm like, I, I need to be smarter about that in the future.
We think they can streamline some of that stuff, couldn't you, but way it is.
And then I also, we also were successful at getting a bikeways grant for a feasibility study from Oakland to Harrington Manor, so I know everybody's I don't know, I generally get the sense that people are like, hey, clearly you can connect these two, like a lot of the trails at Glades Park and stuff, or the Fort Elise Trail, it ends, and you know, to create a loop in Garrett County, this is one of those pieces, but in terms of, like, there's public, there's like town of Oakland land, there's some like management land of D N Rs. Uh, I know that other people have done work and, you know, talked to the glass studders and the other private property owners in this area, and they all seem rather on board, but I don't think anybody's actually done a full-blown study, or like, how do we cross the Yawk, like, once we get, once the Fort Elise Trail ends, is it, you know, updating the Liberty Street Bridge, or is it something else, or, you know? So, this will take, you know, start fresh, and I plan to do like lots of public input, and so, um, once again, the timeline's about the same for the other concept plan, and we'll hopefully have, in the end, have like cost estimates and that alignment, what that trail looks like in terms of characteristic and amenities, so I'm kind of excited about that one too, so.
So, these bike trails, um, that you're talking about, what, are these gonna be paved?
We'll get to find out, that's part of the feasibility study and the public input, so people are like, they need to be eighty-eight accessible, maybe they will be paved, um, but if people are like, nah, I just wanna ride my mountain bike on it, then maybe it's a little rougher, so, kind of depends, or walk, blur walk.
Just thinking, Lord, from the standpoint of future events, when, when stuff like that isn't red zone all the time, it tends to not keep up.
Well, that and like, I mean, those are all the questions that I think this feasibility study should address, like in terms of pros and cons, and like, well, if we go this way, or maybe it's just like widening the road, or you know, getting more easement and like following that path, uh, so it gets plowed on the winter, cause if you have something separated, that's something else to maintain, so you know, I'm, I'm, I'm excited for all of us to look at the project with fresh eyes and kind of start from scratch essentially, so. And then, uh, what else do we have, so then also there's a local highway safety plan grant that I managed to pull off as well, which is, um, I actually did a dual grant application for Allegheny and Garrett Counties, um, and we have a maiden hunt, we just awarded a contract to them, they've done highway safety plans for other counties. Highway safety plan is uh, more of enforcement and education, like, based, uh, but you can also have like functional improvements and and things like that in the plan, and it's helped the state achieve their goal of zero deaths on the road. Um, I don't know, some of my ideas are, are maybe uh, seeing if we can implement some speed enforcement cameras, or, cause I know our sheriff's office lacks the capacity to be everywhere at once, that might help some things, and I don't know what other issues they have, um, in terms of like traffic or intersection or particular improvements, but maybe we'll have, once again, a list of projects that we can go, um, and this will open up a pot of funding for us that we can go after those projects. Um, and then, oh, and lastly, the priority letter, so we just finished up the tour and everything in October with M dot, so once again, the cycle is beginning, and I wanted to share with you the priority letter, where is it, ah, here it is. So last year we turned in this um, priority letter, which include um, two nineteen North Extension, that project's moving along, they had public and, uh, public hearings, and I think we've kind of we're on like E shift, and E as the alignment is like generally the one, so, and they're in like their N I P A, they have like a, a year to do all the N I P A and uh, get that to uh, the Federal Highway Administration, um, but I've been trying to stay on top of that, and I have like a monthly call with Penn Dot and S H A on that project. Um, then, we got grants for the top three, I, like, uh, the top two, like number two, and then Traders Landing, S H A is boring, uh, we've met with Dick Green and the other owners of Traders Landing, to kind of see if there's, we had showed them a bunch of ideas, they kind of picked from the menu, and we'd like to move forward with them, so they're making sure that the the ground can support the changes, and then hopefully we'll see some improvements this uh, spring and summer. Oakland Harrington Manor, yay, and then um, Oakland Bypass is still on here, I don't know, I feel like I don't know, maybe there's a better way, I, I don't know, I'm trying to rethink this one in terms of I know we want better traffic flow in and around Oakland. I know we want better traffic flow in and around Oakland. Clearly, this has been like on and off for fifty years. And also I wanna know, I wanna, I would like to have something that in fifty years would make sense in terms of transportation, whether it's like, you know, we're all on automated vehicles or, you know, I don't know, I'm trying to imagine myself as an old person in Garrett County and my kids like saying, I'm calling the car for you. And then like the car like rolls up to the house and it takes me to my doctor's appointment. Um, or, I don't know, so, I don't, I, like, I don't know. I'm trying to think of a way to maybe rethink this and make sure we're modernizing transportation in Garrett County.
Yeah, I mean, to me, just as somebody that's constantly on the roads, you, you know, not, I, I mean, I understand a lot of people for the bypass, a lot of people are against it.
Contentious and that's why it doesn't.
Well, I just don't understand the need for it, but.
Sure.
But, one of the things that I do find is that if the traffic lights in Oakland were even semi-synchronized.
What? Modern traffic lights in Oakland?
Uh, and, and even the lights at the lake were set up in such a way that like, that they recognized whether traffic was there or not. Because it, it would seem to me that that would be almost a better use of funds than, uh, do all this other stuff potentially would make Oakland the ghost town before it's all set up.
So. I like. No, I'm, I, that, that's, I wanted to go over these and then I want you guys to throw me projects. It's kind of my, the thought on this. Um, and then, I don't know, like in terms of connecting, uh, and trails and stuff, uh, concept plan for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. Like, once again, road's super wide, though it's like elevation's kind of up and down. But I see people run on it and use it, but I don't feel particularly safe. Um, Grantsville has been requesting a sidewalk extension. They did a concept plan. I'm hoping like, you know, keep on putting on S H A's radar, hopefully they fund it. Um, it'll get them to, um, like, the, uh, like to pen out, um, or, yeah, so, and then there was some functional improvements for the intersections that were suggested in a study. On Sandlot Road and one thirty-five, so we were just suggesting to follow through with them, just to increase the capacity. Um, this one's on my radar for maybe an arise grant. Um, I know we're not gonna, they don't have money for streetscapes anymore, um, which is like sidewalks. And also I think the folks in Oakland, like, if you get a sidewalk in front of your house, then you sign a piece of paper saying the sidewalk's my problem now. Which, like, I don't think is very fair either, um, for the public benefit that you, the private property owners have to take care of. Um, so, I would love to take a holistic look at Oakland from like the health department and like, if somebody was like, you know, downtown at the farmer's market, how, could they safely get to Walmart or the health department not using a vehicle? Cause right now, it's a little sketchy, to say the least, so, I've, I'm, I would love to do something to kind of look at that and get the public input and, um, maybe figure something out a little better.
Has there ever been, with all the good stuff you're doing here, has there ever been like a thought of creating a, some kind of a, um, awareness to people so they start walking on the proper side of the road? So that they don't get, running down a highway and run over from behind?
That would be a really great thing for that local highway safety plan in terms of campaigns and marketing.
I sit there and I look at how wide our sides of the roads are and we have pictures of bikes and stuff on it. Wouldn't it make sense to put pictures of people walk this way, you know, that kind of thing, walk with traffic kind of thing every once in a while instead of against it? Cause it, it's a number of people that somehow do not get run over along two nineteen at the lake during the summertime is unbelievable. That, that, and these are people that, you, you know, I know half these people, they go, you're really smart people and you're walking along, they're running along with traffic. So, that might save some money in life.
Might, yeah, that. John, are you writing this down for me? You have a recording, I guess I can refer to that, so. Um, and then I always include our transit operations, um, if there's any specific projects, we'd have them, uh, listed in here. So I need to get ahold of, um, community action on that. Uh, sidewalk expansion to go to the housing development, the county in Grantsville's working on it, six sixty-nine. Friendsville also asked for some additional sidewalks on First Street, which is owned by State Highway. Um, and then modernize traffic controls on U S two nineteen and Alder Street. Why don't we just do a whole, all of those? No, I like your idea. Cause actually the, all those lights are hand-me-downs from Baltimore from the seventies. And I think it probably, you know, I don't think, I think you might be on to something and in terms of cost, it's much cheaper than.
Try that first?
Yeah, I, I mean.
Well, if you had a way to trade or landing.
Well, not Trader's Landing, but just, um, here in Oakland.
There's lights and then you get stopped at the one, then you get stopped at the next one and then it just seems like.
Be nice to have them synced up. That or better ti- better controlled whenever there's like peak flows.
Some of the lights make sense and other ones like the one across from Pizza Hut, that like, I'd never go that way because every time I go there, I sit there for like four minutes. And then I have like thirty seconds to try to get ten cars out of the side of there.
Um, yeah, so, I, let me look at maybe expanding upon that idea, um, in some way. Or maybe even that's something I put in the local highway safety plan to improve the lights and then there might be funding in that pot of money to make that happen. Um, and then accident, like, I don't know, once, if the town bisected by two nineteen and it'd be nice to connect, you know, the different assets and considering, you know, and connect to the school or, you know, just make, bring the community together. Um, talk to the mayor about that. Uh, successful on the highway strategic highway safety plan, that is the one grant I forgot, and then, uh, trail design engineering funds for connecting Friendsville to the, uh, to the Pennsylvania line with the last one, so. Uh, yeah, so, do you guys have any wishlist items for like, hey, this would be nice? Or, um, in terms of transportation?
Say what that, that list's pretty comprehensive list of issues. You don't realize that you see it on a piece of paper. They're definitely all legitimate, they're just, I just think that the, to get the funding to accomplish.
Well, that means like a process to it, so.
I think that, uh, when you said about how long things, I mean, the state's federal government also slow, make you think. But I think the, definitely, definitely need to keep moving forward with them as much as you can. I mean, it's a tough job to do, you guys. If you get any kind of grant money or anything like that, the next step is to get the money from the state, I guess, the federal government or whatever. But the state and Maryland get a lot of the infrastructure money that the federal administration put out, that seventeen billion dollars.
I'm working on it, so there are pots from the I, I I J A. Um, there's one that's an arise grant, which like, that one where I, you kind of look at Oakland holistically and maybe figure out a better way to make those connections, um, like non-motorized connections. That's one I wanna put in for an arise grant, so it's all federal funding, but it's a hundred percent. And then that you can get experts in here to kind of help you with that. Um, and, like, I don't know. In terms of like holistic transportation, long-range plans, like, like I said, we have, you know, they're pushing for electric vehicles. We don't have the infrastructure for those things and, you know, what, you know, if we have, start building out the automatic vehicle or connected networks, like, our, our roads are kind of funky. Be nice to, that and how to get freight through more efficiently and make sure, like, how do we get our phones to connect? Or like the truck drivers' phones be like, don't go on this street, this, this is how you get through Garrett County, this is the way we want you to go. And, I don't know, things like that, it's kind of, are, are things that are on my radar in terms of like, I'd like some higher level planning. So then we could maybe filter down and address.
I read an article this morning or last night or something, it knew that all the money that they spent for the charging stations, seven billion dollars, whatever, not one charging station has been built yet. Now that, now that money has been allocated with that, that's hard to believe. That's just because the fate of bureaucracy of trying to get, get it out into system, the money's allocated, how do you get it from point A to point B, just like you were, you know, what you've done to these grants? It just seemed like the, there's, there's no way to streamline it, the government. But, it'd be nice if you could say, okay, we got a good project here, we estimate it's gonna be a half million dollar. By the time you put some of these projects or get the funding for some of these projects, the project may be a million dollars today, it'd be three point five million. Five years from now when it finally hits the street. When they allocate the money for it, like they did with all the, the car and everything else, everything costs much more because it takes three or four years to design before it gets to, it's a street.
Yeah, well, that's all, like, I'm really hoping that we can build enough contingencies or have enough like estimates in terms of materials that we can be asking for the appropriate amount of money. Um, so, because I do expect, like, you know, if we do get a trail plan or have an alignment for Oakland to Harrington Manor, yeah, it's gonna be five, five years to build, but, um, you know, keeping that in mind, so.
Well, good examples of Lyndale Road project. We said in a meeting over here with the state highway administration, like ten or twelve years ago, that project was supposed to, far, or, you know, be, supposed to be a po- private, public venture, financing venture. And then, what is it now? Twelve years later, we finally got it. God knows how, God knows how much it cost over what it would've cost back then. That's a lot of work you did.
I just remembered there's a lot more projects. Um, this is just my day job. Um, let's see. So, we did get federal earmark m- m- funding, I think eight hundred thousand dollars to extend Meadow Mountain. Um, I don't have the trails on here, I wish I did. Um, but we do have, so, right across from the four H Center, there's a trailhead for Meadow Mountain. Like, it's, uh, and we'd like to expend, extend Meadow Mountain to Deep Creek State Park. I think originally the plan was good, so we were like Rockwatch Trust, but, I don't know, you need cooperation from landlords. In terms of alignment, we have no idea. So, I've asked, uh, retro, like, the discretionary funding people that, we applied for A R C money as, as a match, hopefully we get that come February, but then use the funding to, um, do some better design in terms of alignment and feasibility. And then maybe use the rest of the money to like purchase easements, like pass the four H property, however that goes, to Deep Creek State Park and then my plan B is to take it up to the college and Bumblebee and connect it to that heritage trail if I can go south, go north, so. I'll keep you guys in the loop whenever we have some more on that, so. And, uh, that's, that's all I'm stuck.
That's a lot of stuff. I mean, I'm glad, we just, just hard to believe that. The process you have to go through to, I mean, all of you guys working it all, that you have to go through to make something connect is amazing, has to make me.
It's really exciting whenever like the things actually get built, I must say, so, I was really kind of excited when Fort Run got that new trail in there, so, that was cool.
God guarantee all of a sudden in here, we come up with our own little pet project, we travel around like.
Please let me know, like, send me an email, like, if you have any suggestions, cause these lists, they should grow and they should change. Um, with a bit of consistency on those top projects and I don't, in terms of priority letter, until we have that ribbon cutting, it doesn't get off the list because I would hate to, like jeopardize anything for funding, so.
When will we do that next, next year? When will we do the tri-?
The priority letter, I will, I'm, probably after Christmas, I'll call all the mayors. And so I talk to them and get all their concerns and then hopefully there's like some maintenance stuff that I can just talk to S H A or M Dot and they'll be like, we got it, we'll put in that guard rail or fix that light or, oh, or drainage or whatever it is. And then we'll, then I'll meet with all the mayors and the commissioners and we'll prioritize them. I try to have it done March, it's due in April.
Okay, just keep that in your minds if you have.
That's the timeline, yeah, so.
That is Chad.
That's all I have.
You know?
I bet.
My checkers, if you're ready to work.
I mean, no, I'm not helping.
You're good. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Al. Next meeting is December third. We don't see each other. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
December third?
January third, I'm sorry. Is that what it was? January third.
Next year.
What the guy's coming hungover, right?
For the, for the districts? Yes, we did water sewer plan.